All this meeting order, please silence your electronic devices and stand for the invocation given by councilmember.
Thank you. Please join me in the voice there. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and we shall have eternally peace and love and wisdom. As we in the book of Hebrews say, "He has spoken it unto us all." We shall not temptation, but deliver us from evil. Pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, on your God, and equal civil with liberty and justice in common.
Communications.
The first one is the Genesee Country Farmers Market, not the county. Genesee Country Farmers Market requesting to hold outdoor farmers markets starting on Fridays in May. May 2nd is the first date. Then in June, they will add Tuesdays. So it will be Tuesdays and Fridays until October 31st. In the parking lot between School Center, Jackson and Eloquent Streets from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Any questions or concerns on that? Because I can interfere with the other farmers market.
That is the other farmers market.
Did you explain this rename?
No, the agenda had a type slight typo.
Yeah, it's always on the.
Instead of county, it's country.
It's always. It says county here, that's why I thought it should have been neighborhood.
No, it just is supposed to say.
Because on the, the application, it's got country.
Correct.
I didn't know the change. My mistake. Go ahead, continue.
Caravan Ministries requested to hold their community cookouts on Thursdays from June 5th to August 28th in Austin Park, 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. They also have rented the pavilion for each of those days.
Questions or concerns? Okay, that's.
Living Waters requested to hold their community outreach on Sunday, July 27th, 10:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. in Austin Park. This is an annual event for them.
Any questions or concerns on that? Okay, continue.
And the last is just a notice of liquor license application that we received from TC Simcorp at 8 Batavia City Center. There were no objections from the police department.
Any questions or concerns on that?
I have a question. In New York, what is a bottle license?
Did you say bobble?
Yeah, I think I have the application that said it's a bottle license.
Oh, B-O-T-T?
Um.
Not B-O, BB, not bobble.
So bottle is in, bottle is in like a beverage.
Oh, I don't know.
I believe it means they can bring, the customer brings their own drink.
Oh, it's a bottle club, it says.
So that's the liquor license we're talking about. Do you guys know who it is?
I do not. I don't think it's a liquor.
Sounds familiar.
I do believe it's correct, but I think that's where the.
I think if, yeah, the customer brings their own.
Brings their own.
Can they take it when they leave?
Not open.
Not open. That answers one question. Yeah, I, a lot of centers, they say, have a bottle license where you have to bring it in, then they charge every time you pour a drink. But this says it's also a club, so I guess you would have to be a member of the club. I didn't realize they had such a thing in New York.
Yeah, so it's the liquor authority that handle that. We're just, we're just being notified unless the police or somebody has a complaint, we're just being notified as a courtesy.
Right, but I'd like to know what it did.
Yeah, that's a big, pretty important.
I'm in the little search, it's just something for recreational and social.
A club license is recreational use.
Not being sold.
All in New York. Uh, the next city council meeting will be held Monday, March 24th, 2025, 7:00 p.m. City Hall Council Boardroom, second floor, city center. The only item we have on this special conference is the website upgrade, so can you want to explain what changed or why this?
Sure, thank you, council president. So council had already approved this expenditure. However, when we look back at the resolution, we realized the accounting wasn't where we had anticipated it to go. We wanted to make sure because the website represents both the water fund and the sewer fund, that they are paying a portion of this. So this is a restated resolution to make sure we have authorization to charge these accounts for the expense. Eric, anything else?
Nope. Just to shore up, to make sure we put it in the right place.
And they're all listed on their water funds.
Correct.
What's listed is, is correct.
Originally, it just said Information Technology Reserve, I would.
It had actually five or six, I think it actually had money from the reserve going into the water fund and then back out of the water fund, waste water fund, so we just had us.
Simplified.
Yep.
Any questions or concerns on that? So are we in consensus to move that to tonight's business meeting? Okay, that is moved. Motion to adjourn. Mr. McGinnis, second to by, Mr. Guy, call the roll, please.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Baykowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
I call to order the regular business meeting. You've all been given a copy of the January 2025 financials. Any questions or concerns on that? So are we in consensus to approve the January 2025 financials? Could those get approved? You've all been given a copy of the February 2025 minutes. You'll pack it. Any questions, concerns, omissions, additions? So are we in consensus to approve the February 2025 minutes? We have many agenda items tonight. Assign those now. Number 28, 2025, various committees and boards, Mr. Richmond. 29, 2025, um, another committee assignment, Mr. McGinnis. 30, 2025, the investment policy, Mr. Twitchell. 31, 2025, the employee benefit liability budget amendment, Mr. McGinnis. 32, 2025, the parking lot capital reserve fund transfer, Ms. Briggs. 33, 2025, purchasing manual, Ms. Schmidt. 34, 2025, the overriding of the tax gap, Mr. McGinnis. 35, 2025, the budget ordinance, Mr. Richmond. 36, 2025, uh, new water rates, Mr. Baykowski. 37, 2025, the sewer rates, Ms. Schmidt. 38, 2025, the YMCA Youth Services Agreement, Mr. Twitchell. 39, 2025, the lease agreement for the Batavia Players, Ms. Briggs. 40, 2025, the, uh, city center revitalization project, uh, grant, Mr. McGinnis. 41, 2025, the minnows contract, Mr. Baykowski. 42, 2025, lime sledge removal, Mr. Richmond. 43, 2025, the crane truck purchase, Mr. Twitchell. 44, 2025, the chemical purchase for the, Mr. McGinnis. 45, 2025, equipment request from the police department disposal, Ms. Briggs. 46, 2025, the short barrel rifles purchased for the police department, Ms. Schmidt. And 47, 2025, the, uh, website upgrade, Mr. Twitchell. City attorney, do you have anything you'd like to report?
Um, council president, members of council, we continue to be busy working on a variety of matters ranging from contracts to code enforcement to tax foreclosure matters, but there's nothing specific to report on at this time.
City manager?
Yep, just a few items to report on. The congressional direct spending has come out this year. We will be submitting, um, an application to Congresswoman Tenney's office, Senator Schumer and Gillibrand's office, hoping to receive approximately $1 million for the purchase of a ladder truck. So our ladder truck is nearing end of life. There's a four-year planning and build cycle that the chief has started to undertake, and we're hopeful to see if we can get funding drawn down from that program. As you recall, we got 2.5 million for the police station through that program, through USDA. We have not heard about any pauses in that funding, as some other grant programs at the federal level have been paused. Um, we haven't gotten any word that, that, that money is affected in any way. Um, the police station construction is going well. There's interior walls and chief, I believe we want to set up a tour with council in the next month or so to get you guys in there to see the progress on the construction and the interior. Um, we won't allow photos, but we will let you in to see, um, how everything's shaping up. We are at a tight deadline to get an INI grant application in. Um, I'm sure you guys recall my letter in 2022 to the DEC where we promised to look at INI inflow and infiltration, our stormwater into our sanitary sewer. Um, this grant came up that hasn't been offered in the last year and a half, so we're, uh, speedily putting an application in, um, to try to get 50,000 to 100,000 in study money for INI. Um, we've also been extremely busy, the DPW department, on a variety of things, including the county's Phase 3 water project, um, looking at the water tank as well. That's one of the capital projects. We've been talking to the county about, um, almost all the projects at the water plant are completed or will be by this fall, I believe. So that WEA grant project was about a four-and-a-half-year project, so, um, then we're working with DEC to continue, um, to prepare for the new Speedies permit. So those are the big items we're working on. Questions?
Did you want to cover anything on the FEMA?
Um, I didn't get a chance to stay the whole meeting. I was slightly disappointed that FEMA failed to use the gauge, USGS gauge in the Tonawanda, while they were doing their mapping. Um, otherwise, we have paid, and I appreciate council, um, allowing us to use committed fund balance for engineers to look at, um, their mapping and everything that's been done. I believe we were successful in lessening the floodway, especially in the Creek Park area. Um, it seems like they'd like to hold a public merit meeting in the near future, but they have no idea when and if they can ever travel again, so... Anything else? You were there, council president?
I think, yeah, they were talking about April.
Yeah.
I think, uh, because they were throwing dates around, so they had a tentative date of April for a public meeting, but right now, it's just a preliminary map. Um, you can't really, um, try to get a variance or, uh, what they call a LOMA, Letter of Map Amendment. You can't get that yet until the map goes final, and then people can apply and try to get their, uh, part, uh, parcels looked at, see if maybe they could be exempted out, maybe due to a high spot or whatnot. Generally, um, like we talked about earlier, uh, there was many changes, but 150 properties came out and about 100 went, uh, there was 250 properties total, but 100 came out and some went back in. So that's a net removal of about 150 properties that no longer are in the flood zone. So that's where it stands now, and there's still some revisions that we can argue about, like I, like Rachel said in reference to the gauge and all that from the curriculum.
Yeah, you have to, to, at this point now, anyone who wants to make an argument, it has to be technical and it has to be done by an engineer.
Right.
So the time to give draft comments is over, um, so now you're paying big bucks to, to be able to, um, put in any further comments from a municipality or from a whole owner's standpoint. So, yeah, we're not really sure, they couldn't answer when their meeting could occur because they have no authorization to travel, so.
Yeah, it was kind of a, it's a lot of technical stuff, it's hard to grasp it, and the presentation was a little weak for the layperson unless you're somebody that does this all the time or an engineer. Uh, so it's, it, it's still in the process, so we're just gonna have to wait and see how they come out of it, and hopefully our professionals can do some more, um, advocating on our behalf and see how that works out. Because it helps everybody in pretty much half the city who's going to benefit from this. So, anything else, Rachel?
Nope, that's it.
Any questions for the city manager or the city attorney? Number 28, 2025, Mr. Richmond.
Thank you, council president. I move a resol- a resolution to appoint members to various city committees, boards, agencies.
Second to by, Ms. Schmidt. Questions or concerns? You, um, Ms. Briggs, you checked these individuals out?
Yes, yes.
They all qualify under the charter.
Yes, I'm interested, yeah, I mean.
Oh, maybe they didn't. So it's Alexis Green and Ryan Duffy, and that's going to be on the Historic Preservation Commission?
Yeah.
So no one has any concerns on that?
Yeah.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Richmond?
Yes.
Baykowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Number 29, 2025, Mr. McGinnis, please.
Thank you, council president. I move a resolution to appoint members of various city committees and boards.
Okay, this resolution is, it just says Historic Preservation Committee on it.
It's a, it's a most duration.
Right, but I don't think it's historic, what's, what's.
Board of assessment.
Board of assessment, so the, the resolution says Historic Preservation Commission on it, I think it's a typo. So 29, 2025 should be Board of Assessment Review. So we can make that, obviously, we'll make that correction on the official resolution. Uh, second to by, Ms. Briggs. Um, any questions or concerns other than that one typo? Um, we did, she's been verified in this side the other week. Okay, good. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Baykowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Resolution 30, 2025, Mr. Twitchell, please.
Thank you, council president. I move a resolution authorizing the adoption of an investment policy for the city of Batavia, New York.
Second to by, Mr. Guy. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Baykowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Resolution 31, 2025, Mr. McGinnis, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution transferring $47,131.49 from the employee-approved liability reserve into amended budget.
Second to by, Mr. Twitchell. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Baykowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Resolution 32, 2025, Ms. Briggs, please.
Thank you, council president. I move a resolution transferring $5,000 to the parking lot capital reserve fund.
Second to by, Mr. Guy. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Baykowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Resolution 33 dash 2025, Ms. Schmidt, please.
Thank you, council president. I move a resolution authorizing the adoption of a purchasing manual for the city of Batavia, New York.
Second to by, Ms. McGinnis. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Baykowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Resolution 34, 2025, Mr. McGinnis, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution to adopt the local law to override the tax cap limit, or the budget, this will be commencing 1 April, 2025.
Second to by, Mr. Richmond. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Baykowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Resolution 35, 2025, Mr. Richmond, please.
Thank you, council president. I move a resolution to adapt the 2025, 2026 budget ordinance.
Second to by, Ms. Briggs. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Richmond?
Yes.
Baykowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Resolution 36, 2025, Mr. Baykowski, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution adopting local law number two of the year 2025 to amend section 184 dash 41a of the Code of the City of Batavia to establish new water routes.
Second to by, Mr. Richmond. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Baykowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Resolution 37, 2025, Ms. Schmidt, please.
Thank you, council president. I move a resolution adapting local law number three of the year 2025 to amend section 147 dash 47a of the Code of the City of Batavia to establish new sewer routes.
Second to by, Mr. McGinnis. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Baykowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Resolution 38, 2025, Mr. Twitchell, please.
Thank you, council president. I move a resolution to authorize the city council president to execute a youth services agreement with the Genesee County YMCA.
Second to by, Mr. Richmond. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Baykowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Resolution 39, 2025, Ms. Briggs, please.
Thank you, council president. I move a resolution authorizing the city council president to sign lease agreement with Batavia Players Incorporated.
Second to by, Ms. Schmidt. Questions or concerns? Yeah, from the, uh, the manager, have they made any more payments under, uh, since our last meeting?
Um, not that I'm aware of, no. Nope, but they're working hard to make those catch-up payments, so.
Pardon?
They're working hard to make those catch-up payments. I don't have the exact balance, but I believe they were down to 19,000 in what was owed, tidy as that.
Sounds about right.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there was not many since.
Yep.
Anyone else? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
No.
Baykowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Resolution 40, 2025, Ms. McGinnis, please.
Thank you, council president. I move a, a resolution to establish Empire State Development, he consent proposal for the state city center revitalization project, designate a, a signatory on the grant, approve the funding for the, of the project, for the appropriation of city center fund balance, and the use of fund, built facility reserves, and from the 2024, 2025 budget.
Second to by, Mr. Baykowski. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Baykowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Resolution 41, 2025, Mr. Baykowski, please.
Hey, Mr. President. I move a resolution ordering the contract for harvesting bad head minnows.
Ms. Schmidt is second. Questions or concerns?
Council president, just briefly, uh, last week, the high bidder, Mr. Daniels, uh, wrote a letter complaining about not being awarded the bid. However, I corresponded with him and identified the fact that there were two pages required for the bid. The first page was the financial offer on behalf of purchasing the minnows. The second was the noncollusive bidding form, which is required under General Mansplo, section 103D. He did not complete that when he submitted his bid, therefore, his bid cannot be considered. So just want to make that clear for council on the record.
So it's very important if we, you're involved in bidding, to make sure that all the paperwork is completed, and maybe check with someone who knows how to do it, and make sure you did it right. Because it's unfortunate, but technically, we can't allow this because it's not completed, and so it has to be thrown out.
Correct.
So, did he understand?
I haven't heard anything further, but the answer is the answer per New York State General Mansplo, section 103.
My law, we have no choice here.
Yeah, there are only two pages, and the second page is the noncollusive bidding form, and it was not completed at all. There's not much we can do.
Unfortunate. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment, Mr. President. I don't think a lot of people realize it, but this is, these minnows live in our sewage lagoons, and we do get some return on the money. I mean, this contracts work just under $100,000 over three years. So it's a substantial amount of money to sell these bad head minnows. And it's important, you know, I mean, with the cost of chemicals, treatment, lime sludge removal, everything going on, water, water and sewage obviously is becoming a major cost factor. Thank you.
Yeah, it's nice to get a little, recoup some of the money back. And if I'm not, if I remember correctly, a lot of these go to be for sportsmen in the area for bait and various other things. So it gets recycled into recreation and various other activities for people who live in the area. So it's kind of a nice cycle of events that take place and allows us to make a little money back. Anyone else have any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Resolution 42, 2025, Mr. Richmond, please.
Thank you, council president. I move a resolution awarding the contract for slug, lime slug removal.
Second to go, Mr. Twitchell. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Resolution 43, 2025.
Thank you, council president. I move a resolution awarding a purchase contract for a crane.
Second to go, Mr. McGinnis. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Resolution 44, 2025, Mr. McGinnis.
Thank you, council president. I move a resolution awarding a purchase contract for chemicals.
Second to go, Ms. Briggs. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Resolution 45, 2025, Ms. Briggs, please.
Thank you, council president. I move a resolution to declare police department equipment surplus for the purpose of disposal.
Second to go, Mr. Grant. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
I recognize all these serial numbers, Sean. These are all the guns.
You had them memorized?
I built them all. They're all Yankee Hill machine.
I want the gas gun.
You're gonna have to go buy it.
And I recognized the prefix, that YH prefix. That's when we built all those for, from parts to save money.
And they, they served us very well, so.
Yeah, they likely had to be 15 years old, and that would all around, so it's a pretty good life value. All right, resolution 46, 2025, Ms. Schmidt, please.
Thank you, council president. I move a resolution to award a contract for the purpose of short-term, short-barrelled brain was.
Second to go, Mr. McGinnis. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.